Hold there either.
City Council on their homepage.
We're ready to roll when you are.
Sorry, I may have thrown a wrench in this.
Yeah? Oh, no.
Looks like they didn't catch you all.
Can I read?
Good evening. Welcome to the July 24th City Council meeting. I invite you to join me and a few moments of mindfulness breathing. Help get us oriented to our meeting. This is your first time here. Been doing this for over a year and a half now, I think, almost two years. And it's just a way to become more aware of your surroundings and the people, aware of the people you're with. If you'd like to participate, you can gaze downward or close your eyes. Go sit back in your seat. Put your feet firmly on the floor. Feel them. Feel your presence in the chair and in the room. Or at home, if you're doing this at home. Sit back and find a way to relax your neck and your shoulders. By doing so, you're gonna start paying attention to your breath. I invite you to start taking deeper breaths, longer breaths. Perhaps you would like to count four on your inhale, five on your exhale, if that works for you. And to take three breaths on your own time. All right, and for your last breath, why don't you take one and then blow it out kind of hard. Get a nice cleansing breath. Being mindful is helping, helping you become more focused on what is going to be happening in the present. And soon we're going to concentrate on some city business. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to all of you for being here and being part of your local government and being a resident who's coming in and participating or business owner. Really appreciate you. I really appreciate you being a part of all of this. So with that, I'm gonna ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
James.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
Mikulski.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana.
Here. Next up is the approval of the agenda. And we have one addition, which is 4E for a new presentation to introduce our new finance accountant in the finance department.
I move to approve the agenda with the additional presentation.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Potem James and supported by Leaks May.
James.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Pollocka.
No.
Piana.
Yes. All right.
Excuse me, Mayor, just a point of order. On the agenda this evening, there does appear to be regular agenda item 8A, which is consideration of the...
I'm sorry, not 8A, it's a...
The public hearing?
Public hearings.
6A?
That is the public hearing.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Your Honor.
You mean to vote?
No. I was wrong in our investigation. I had an inquiry about the public hearing item and I mistook it for something else.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
We've resolved the issue.
So your no vote stands, but it wasn't what you meant?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Okay, moving on to presentations. It is 4A is Presentation of the July 2023 Ferndale Beautification Coneflower Awards. Hi there, it's good to see you.
My name's Anne Gallagher and I'm the co-chair of the Ferndale Beautification Committee. And I'm giving out the Coneflower Award today. The Coneflower is the city's official flower. It's a great pollinator. I have quite a few out in my yard. I saw quite a few bubble bees. So it's a beautiful flower. Go ahead and plant some and maybe next year you can win the Coneflower Award. I'm here to present the award to Joanne Lacks and Greg Sumner at 522 La Prairie Street. They have a beautiful yard. I don't have a picture up on the screen today, but they have quite a few coneflowers to the left and to the right of this gorgeous arch. They also have like a beautiful walkway that they did in the easement that they just put in this year. It's very beautiful. And today I took a little... Backyard is stunning. The backyards are not counted for the Coneflower Award, but it is beautiful in their backyard. So they've done a lot of work on their house. It's gorgeous. Go ahead and drive by there. Would you like to come up and receive your award, Joanne and Greg? If you'd like to say a few words or talk about your house?
And can you repeat the address of your home?
522 La Prairie Street.
And he said if we win again, we get beer.
Yeah, I did.
And who...
I said you get a plaque and that, but you...
Okay, privately. And who knew the Coneflower was the city flower? I don't know flowers so well. I've been a resident on La Prairie since 1997, 26 years. And I've always loved the extra deep backyard and I love the street and I love Ferndale. And as of about three years ago, my front yard was sort of an afterthought. It was full of crabgrass. And then I married a woman with a green thumb. And here we are. It's a full circle here. So thank you for turning it into beauty. Thank you, Joanne.
So when I moved here three years ago, no, two years ago, Greg said that the yard could be a blank slate for me and I took him at his word and made him dig out half of the grass in the front yard and putting a lot more coneflowers to add to the ones that he had there. I had no idea that they were the city flower, but they are a great choice for you, city flower. They grow so well. They give so much beauty and they're great for the pollinators. So I'd encourage other people to put them in. And they spread. I had to dig some out this spring and put some in the backyard.
Joanne is the brains of the operation. I'm the shovel man.
Make a good team.
Thank you.
Can we get, would you like a picture of the name?
Oh, yes.
Can we get a picture?
Sure. And congratulations.
I want the whole thing.
Congratulations. All right. Next up is 4B. Presentation to review our grant-funded research and recommendations on improving services through a tiered rate structure for the shared compact areas in Ferndale's Central Business District and our expert on waste. Welcome, Claire.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm actually excited today to introduce Nora Bundy. She is a U of M graduate student and was Ferndale's CLC Fellow this past summer. So the Catalyst Leadership Circle, it's a program that's funded by the state of Michigan. It is made up of different municipal sustainability leaders throughout the state. And the annual fellowship program, it's intended to help build the internal capacity of small cities with big goals. That sounds like us, doesn't it? And so this past summer, I had the pleasure of working with Nora on a research project that's a continuation of the 2020 Downtown Waste Plan. And tonight Nora will present her findings and recommendations to redesign the downtown sanitation finance structure to help create a more equitable and resilient program for future challenges. So take it away, Nora. Get out my presentation here. Thank you all very much for having me and for being here.
Great to have you.
All right. Okay, so like Claire said, I'm here to present the findings of this nine weeks of work here in Ferndale. I also want to add that we did have a technical advisor as well. His name is Bob Swain and he is the Public Works Manager from Grand Rapids. So thank you to him. And thank you all for having me. I'm gonna jump right in. So I'm gonna talk about just a summary of the project, what our goals were here in the project and how they aligned with your city goals. The research we did, some recommendations, and then I'm happy to take your questions after. And you will also be receiving a full report that's much more detailed than this 10 minutes. So please know that as well. Okay, so here in Ferndale, you all have these fantastic shared collection systems. They give you a lot of benefits, like creating clearer alleyways, space for people to eat. This is a picture of the compactor area that is right there on Vester, which some of you may know about. The current funding structure is through property taxes and special assessment rates. Your areas are managed primarily by the Department of Public Works. They're serviced. Your hauler is car trucking. And then Sakura manages Ferndale's contract with car trucking. Again, this may be all reviewed, but just for everyone else in the room, that's sort of the main players in the system, along with obviously the businesses in your central business district using these systems. So what is a tiered rate structure? Currently, your highest generators and your lowest generators, due to this funding structure, are paying approximately the same amount, although they're disproportionately contributing to the service cost and the actual weight and volume of waste going into the system. So with a tiered rate structure, the amount of waste that you generate is proportional to what you're gonna pay into the system. So that's kind of the critical takeaway of what this system endeavors to do. But then, of course, your main question is, well, how do we figure out who these high generators are and who are the low generators in the system? So we looked at a ton of different programs across the country. Our nearest neighbor that we found doing this was in Ypsilanti, Michigan. So about the same population size, but very different density, different community. In, across the board, what we found was that the highest generators are restaurants, bars, and cafes, so food businesses. And then the lower generators of, again, this is talking about landfill waste, are offices, retail establishments, salons, that type of thing. And size of business is also emphasized in these systems, less than the type of business. That's important to remember as we go forward. Some places, like Lawrence, Kansas, do incorporate a square footage metric or an occupancy rate metric for when they're making their tiers. But again, that's less common, I think, especially in smaller cities like Ypsilanti. So current Ferndale data that we looked at, you all have a fantastic key fob system that's installed at one of your compacters, one of the four. And although this doesn't give us a volume number, so it doesn't give us an amount, but it did give us the number of times that each business went into that compactor room to dispose of waste. So those are the kind of the numbers that we looked at. And again, this is just tracking the compactor room. It doesn't track the recycling at all. So that's also an important consideration. And you all have a plan to input the same system at the Whittington compactor, which is fantastic. That'll just give you more data. And those are the largest compactors in the city. So that's great options for how to do that. So what did we find? We found that for the 24 businesses represented for the majority of the year, so six months or more of use, that captures 97% of the opens, your data in Ferndale really was very much the same as what we found in other places. So restaurants, bars, cafes, the grocery store, they were opening the compactor room the most often by far. And it's actually a pretty good comparison because you can see that the salon, personal care sort of category has six businesses, the restaurant, also six businesses. So it's, it truly is a disproportionate amount that these types of businesses are opening and using this service. Again, organic waste is also a good opportunity for this city, and we'll talk about that more later. But it's much heavier waste as well, so that factors into discussions on the cost of disposal. Okay, so like I've mentioned, Ypsilanti has this system already. If we map Ferndale's, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to say this. So we looked at 2022, because that's the full year that you all have data for currently. And that's why we chose 2022. But if we mapped Ferndale's 22 business profile onto the Ypsilanti categories, just with their tiered rates as an example, that would add $22,000 worth of funding to your shared system. And that funding would actually cover a large percentage of sort of these multiple categories of service that you all have for these areas, including 93% of DPW and contracted compactor maintenance. The other thing that it could cover, the added service that it could provide, would be education through Green Living Science, which is a Detroit recycling education nonprofit that has a proven track record of service to businesses locally in waste reduction practices and providing those types of resources. Claire, our waste expert, as you said, has already sort of gotten quotes and is in communication with them about what that program could look like. So again, this is just one example of some different services that this added funding could go toward. Another thing to note, and that we found in our analysis, is that in 2022, the funds coming from the DDA only in property taxes and special assessment rates were around $124,000. The total service costs for the recycling and compactor areas were $131,000 approximately. So you'll notice that there is a gap. Part of that is a result of service costs going up and the system maybe not having as much flexibility as you would want to respond to those types of things. So again, this is just something to note. Along with that, again, the location of your shared services, the highlighted parcels are all the DDA parcels. And again, that was that 124,000-ish number. So that funding is coming from all of these highlighted parcels, but the compactors are only serving a specific percentage of those parcels. So that's also something to consider when you're looking at kind of the ratios and who is being provided service and at what cost. Okay, so how are these, why is this important and how does it align to Ferndale's goals? You all have done a fantastic job of planning for resilience and sustainability. You've got these three reports, all of which mention important reasons to think about these kinds of issues. And this is just really for your reference as you continue to go through. But specific recommendations on funding, I think that tiered rates are a great option. Again, it was recommended in 2020. But within that, I would support a distribution of key fobs to all businesses who have access to this area and make that a really low barrier to entry. That's gonna give you a lot better tracking ability on... That's going to give you a lot better tracking ability on, just for all data, which is important if you're going to keep evaluating the system. And then adding one to two tiers, restaurants for sure, and then bars, cafes, and groceries, you can think about that as well, just because those are the primary and highest users of the system. And then your finance department recommended that you do that as a utility rate, as opposed to trying to tier the special assessment rates, just because, again, that utility rate adds a little bit more flexibility, and it cuts out some middlemen stakeholders when businesses are not also the parcel owner. So, lots more to talk about on that. But again, continuing to consider special assessment rate changes, my recommendation is in no way that that should be taken out of the funding structure, just that there needs to be added support from the highest users of the system. So, program recommendations, continuing to do data tracking, all those things like that. And Claire has, or will have by the end of this week, my final spreadsheets that will give her the opportunity to continue to track both expenses and service costs in addition to the key fob entries. And then business outreach, again, the DDA has been fantastic, and we did do sort of an initial survey during this time that was really informative, and you'll be getting the complete results of that as well. But just continuing that communication. And then, of course, improving diversion and reducing waste, again, through these educational contracts that can provide more of a resource that you all don't have to do as much management of. I think that would be really helpful. So, with that, I just want to thank you all again for listening and you all for listening, and I could not have done this without many of the people in this room, including Summer and Claire and Dan, who I know isn't here. But yeah, thank you all so much, and I'm happy to take any questions.
For council?
Or not, that's fine.
I had one question about the trade-offs of investing more in composting to reduce the waste versus investing the tiered waste model. So, would there be a factor in the tiered waste if we spent, encouraged more composting thereby reducing larger restaurants from contributing that much waste into the bin?
You've got it. So, that is a sort of six of one, half dozen of the other, right? Because you want to reduce waste, and in order to do that, you need to divert a significant amount to some other source, right? Whether it's going to be recycling, composting, something like that. But you could, right? As you're getting started, you're not going to have that problem, because composting right now, as you all know, doesn't have great infrastructure in this area. So, the startup cost of that program is going to need some investment, whether or not that's from grants, like I know Claire's been looking at extensively, or from some of this funding. I think the key is that all those pieces are going to have to work together, and you're going to have to balance the financial cost of the system from startup to what it looks like 10 years down the road with how you're structuring those tiers specifically. Does that answer your question?
I think so. You need to get started.
Yeah.
You can't put all your eggs in one basket.
Yeah.
But you need to, to get started, but then you figure it out as you go. Because that's kind of what I'm hearing you say. And then the grant process is a big part of it, of raising funds to help launch more of what I think would be a restaurant composting program for these services. One service area or more.
I think that, so, the, again, the 2020 plan and I believe the Plan Ferndale Climate Action Plan both recommend doing that anyway. And I think SACRA and Car Trucking, I mean, they were amazing to talk to. And in the 2020 report, again, SACRA was open to exploring the food waste options. But I think, you know, you all have some great resources and also great communal resources that you can access that will help you move through that process and think through the process, defray the individual cost for Ferndale of those big investments.
Through the chair.
Thank you for that.
So, right now, we have very few businesses that recycle. And, of course, we have to pay for waste, but we actually get kickbacks from SACRA for recycling.
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity to, through, by creating some type of structure where businesses could actually get some kind of kickback if they're doing recycling?
Absolutely. So, yes, certainly. I think if you're talking about directly tying SACRA rebates, which I think is what you're referencing.
Kind of, sort of.
To individual businesses, I don't know that that is something you want to -- that seems really complex, just logistically.
Yeah.
But I think that, you know, some of these business education programs that Detroit nonprofit, Green Living Science System, I'm blanking on the name, we can find out. Yeah, Green Living Science, sounds right. They, again, they have this proven record of increasing diversion rates. And I will also say that in many places that have implemented these systems, they have also seen recycling rates go way up when you make it, when you incentivize businesses to reduce waste, right? So, you're definitely coming at it from both ends, if you do the education piece and also incentivize waste reduction. But yes, absolutely, I think there's room in here for a direct incentive that would be sort of an active carrot, right? Of if you recycle X much, you get X. But the complicated piece of that in your current technology structure would also require some investment.
Sure.
So, it's not simple, but it is useful.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other question?
Through the chair, this might be more, this is more of a comment than a question.
Okay.
Understanding that this is sort of, you know, the first presentation of a proposal that might come to council down the road, I would recommend that maybe some conversations with a variety of downtown businesses might help us refine some of the factors that we're not even thinking of, that would cut in either direction of more waste than anticipated or less waste than anticipated, as well as that sort of educational component, that sort of the more dialogue we have with businesses before a tiered structure went into place, perhaps we'd increase recycling and maybe even make some connections toward composting infrastructure, sort of in the lead-up to even implementing something like this.
I think that that is a fantastic idea, and this community is lucky to have you in your position.
Thank you.
This is a fantastic presentation, and I'm just so grateful that you spent time with us during your fellowship and spent nine weeks digging into something that we've wanted to find solutions for. And I think you've given us a good pathway forward to explore options rooted in good fact-finding here.
Thanks, it was a blast.
And what, may I ask, what are you moving on to next?
More school.
More school. Well, good luck in your studies.
Thanks.
All right, we are now moving on to the fourth presentation, which is 4C, third presentation, which is 4C, is Presentation of the City's Newly Designed Website, FerndaleMI.gov. And I wish I had sort of like the intro to a big movie to unveil here for you, to welcome you to the big unveil.
I have a meme hanging in my office right now that says I don't always launch a website, but when I do, I mention it so many times, people want to hit me with a hammer. Almost every colleague who has seen it is like, yep. Okay, so, hopefully this will be one of our last talks about this ongoing process. So, yes, so obviously, as most of you know, we officially launched the website before the end of June. And I'm sure that you all understand, but just to kind of go through it quickly here, a new website, especially for an organization like ours, is an intricate process and it takes a long time. So, it was actually over a year in the making, and I just wanted to run through a quick timeline to let people know what that looks like. We actually started this officially last June 22. And we started with an internal needs assessment. We met with other departments, we heard what council has had to say, we heard what our residents have had to say. And what we did was make up a gigantic list of all the things that we want and need in a new website, things that must be fixed and things we would like to be able to showcase. And then from there, we used that, we whittled it down, and we created a Request for Proposal, or RFP. And that officially launched to the public on July 22. So, we had about a six-week turnaround on that, and we kept that open until August 26, that closed. We got 27 proposals with over 10,000 pages of documentation. So, marketing and web companies, when they respond to these kinds of requests, woo boy, do they ever. So, we had basically about a month to go through internally and evaluate all of those. We put together an internal committee, including Councilwoman McColsky, obviously with her expertise, and we whittled down based on a number of factors that we had preset. Then we got together and we rated them as a group, as well as individually. Luckily, everybody on the team, which came from a variety of different parts of our city, came up with the same top five, which we then brought down to three, and then we ran an interview process. And we all walked away with Hadrow Design as our top firm. Hadrow is a local business, they've been in Ferndale for over 10 years, and it's a woman-owned business. You know, we're always delighted when we can honor and use a local Ferndale business rather than going with a national or larger chain like that. So, we were happy about that. Council approved our choice at the November 28 meeting last year. The process began this January. Again, meetings, research, all that kind of good stuff. Hadrow started their design and development process, and then we finished it up this June. So, that's where we are now. So, a real quick repeat here, why even change the website in the first place? Four main reasons. Number one, we had heard a number of accessibility issues from people. Text and font is hard to read, colors make it hard to read, things are too small, as well as issues with search, both in finding the right things on search, as well as not having Google Ad results come up. We were really locked into the way the content was structured and looked on the last page. So, we found ourselves more and more frustrated as a department with requests from, say, the Accessibility and Advisory Commission, or from the police department, who wants to do something special to highlight a really great program or, you know, a really great set of people. And we just really didn't have the capacity to do it. And kind of the main reason here is that our contract was over at the end of June this year, and the company that we had been with for the last seven years no longer is in the web business. So, we had to find somebody new. Okay, so a little bit about who uses our website and the thought process in a small way, because as I'm sure Councilwoman McColsky knows, we could do this for an hour tonight. But who uses our website and why are we making the decisions we make? You can see that the answer really is everybody. We have a broad array of ages. You know, it trends a little bit higher in the younger audience, which makes sense. It's also why we make the decisions we do about newsletters and mailers and in the tax bills and things like that. But we're pretty spread across the board. There's not one group of people who, you know, is significantly higher. Again, we're pretty split in male, female. By the way, that's Google Ad reporting, that's not us dividing this into two genders. But it's just to give an idea, we're about split there. We have about 160,000 users a year of those people. We have just shy of 500,000 page views. So, most people are using it for at least two pages when they come to get where they need to go. And the predominantly, there's a predominantly new users. So, again, why we put a lot of stock into people who are trying to use the site for the first time versus people like internally who are using it over and over and over again. We sometimes have the hardest times with change because we have such a process and a system. And, but really, we're trying to design it for people who are coming here new and trying to find things for the first time. What are they on our site looking for? It's really nuts and bolts, and this very rarely changes. Every time we come back to these analytics, it's paying bills, property taxes, water, it's looking for garbage and recycling, as well as fall cleanup and yard waste. Police, Parks and Rec, and DPW remain our top three departments almost every time we look. DPW tends to trend a little higher in the summer and fall, and Parks and Rec as well. And as well as news. Sometimes council meetings move up above news, depending on what all's going on. So, you know, what we kind of are taking away from this is what are the goals we want to design our new site to meet? And based on all of this and all of the conversations we have, we come up with about four. The first goal is that essential nuts and bolts information needs to be easy to find, because that is what the majority of people are coming and then they're doing, and they're also maybe not familiar with the website. But, you know, we have so many things we want to feature to people. So, why not find a way to, you know, if you're going to come, if the number one reason you're coming to our website is for water, you want to find out about how to get your water account going or pay your bill, then why don't we feature Parks and Rec right next to it? This is on the residence page. Residents would, you know, presumably be interested in what's going on in our Parks and Rec. Property taxes, that's July, so it makes sense that we feature that right now. As we move, you know, out of summer and into the fall, that will move, and we'll change that into potentially fall cleanup, since that's one of our top searches. And we, our goal basically is to make sure that the basic info you're getting to, you find it quickly, but you might also find something else that we want you to see on there that would be helpful for you. So, that kind of helps us tell the story of our people, our programs, and all the things we've got going on. The second goal, probably in a lot of ways the most important one, is accessibility. And as you can see, this is just a quick screenshot in its actual size from our department's page, our government page. So, a few things have happened here. Number one, the font got three times larger than what we had on the old site. Number two, you'll see a lot more contrast in colors, white on dark and dark on very light or white. And number three, you've got photos that have been added almost everywhere, icons where there can't be photos. There aren't too many places where you're not going to find at least one or the other in main, important navigation. And that helps everybody to be able to find things easier. The other thing we have is something called accessibility. This is an overlay on the website. And what it does basically is allow you, as you're going through the site, every single page on the bottom right, you'll find our little accessibility human there with his arms up, the symbol for accessibility. And if you click on that person, you're going to bring up some options that allow you to customize the website to your own user experience. As you can see on the left, your top options there are if you just want to pick something specific to you and you want them to create a profile for you. If you have seizures, for example, if you're low sight, if you have ADHD. Or if you would prefer to customize it, if you scroll down a little bit further, you get the second box, and that allows you to play with literally every feature. You can turn the entire website into white background with large black text. You can change the colors, you can take away any flash, you can basically do whatever you want. And it should be set so that it retains your preferences as you come back to the site to use it again. Our third goal was that we would bring together all of our different sites into one. You may remember that kind of over the years, we've collected a few, mainly the main Ferndale website and Park Ferndale. And when we first launched the parking website, it made a lot of sense that it was a standalone, because it was probably our most searched topic, and there was a lot of discussion about the dot and all the construction happening. And, you know, now we've kind of resorted back into a regular city parking, municipal parking system. So, it makes sense that we have this all together. It is still on our top navigation, so that it's easily found, but now we'll have all of the Park Ferndale content. of the Park Ferndale content built in here. Same thing with Ferndale Moves, which it's, it's not fully there yet, but um, that is our uh, mobility plan that council adopted years ago. That content will move in here and everything that had been on the standalone dot microsite, um, which has been gone for a while now, has been moved in here. And then finally, we wanted things to be easier to find and feature. So search for sure, um, search is important. I will tell you that right now, our search is, if you were to type in commission, it's bringing up everything and it's not waiting the search. So if it says boards and commissions on the footer of every single page, every page is gonna come up. That is being fixed. Um, we're already aware of that. Maria, um, who is our contact at Hadrow Design, um, basically built a custom search for this custom site. And so she said it's gonna be a couple of weeks yet before it's completely weighting things properly, but there is no ad, which I'm happy about. And um, and it should be functioning as expected shortly. So if you have struggles with that, little bit more patience and we're almost there. And you know, again, we've heard stories from boards and commissions, as well as some of our departments, that they've got great stories to tell. Um, I'm the liaison for Arts and Cultural Commission. They're working right now on an art census, um, making this great master list of artists and makers in our community. And so now every board and commission has their own page, they can customize appropriately. I have meetings scheduled with all of our main boards and commissions so that we can talk through what they want to feature. Um, and we did that with all of our departments as well. So we're in the process of tailoring everything the way our people themselves, who are the ones performing the work and doing the programs, would want their stories told. So it's a lot better. And finally, I just kinda wanna step away with next steps here. So right now, we're kind of at the official launch. We called June 30 the soft launch because there's still a number of problems. Um, you know, we're, we're a small department, we're a department of three, two people who work on these kinds of projects. Uh, Hadrow Design is also a small business with only a few staff members. And um, they put in above and beyond, let me tell you what, they, they did everything for us. But with something like this, especially when we're dealing with small staffs, it's, you know, these are things we just have to navigate. And so we are working through the final changes as we speak. I think you will, if you have spent time on the website, will notice that they've gotten significantly better in the last two weeks. So we're almost there. I will say that our goal for everything to be done and functioning absolutely property with no glitches or missing links anywhere is August 6th. And um, then the site is considered finalized and we just go forward. Uh, I would encourage anybody if they have concerns or they find something that um, they don't, you know, they run across that might not have been um, fixed already. On the homepage, there's a banner you can click right on, it'll take you to a form and allow people to submit the issues that way. And that gets right into our kind of ticketing system, which Riley and I are handling. Some on a as they come in basis, some if they're more important, um, you know, quicker if we need to. So we're prioritizing as they come in. So that's all I have, but I'd be happy to take questions.
Really appreciate the update. Would you like- To the chair, how many pages do you think you migrated into the new website?
We had about 450 without all of the specialty-like project pages that have all the information like for, you know, a development project that's going on and things like that. So we've kind of started with 450.
So just to give council some perspective on website development, um, average website of about 10 pages can sometimes take about 30 days to develop. It was a tremendous, tremendous effort, uh, through the communications department and through our partner Hadrow. I know that your website, that the Ferndale website started out probably just shy of 1,000 pages, so there was some consolidation there. And then bringing over those other websites into the current FerndaleMI.gov website, that was also immense. So very, very fantastic effort. Um, and I know that I mentioned that I was gonna get you a little present. And I did.
Aww.
It's just a means. I thought that you deserved a little trophy.
Thank you.
I was going to label this as I survived the website design, but instead it's, it's the great Ferndale website redesign MVP because you and your team-
Aww, we love it.
Thank you. I, I think Laura would probably agree with that.
We make other people do pictures. Thank you so much, that's very nice of you. I really, we couldn't have done it with all of your guidance, we really appreciate it.
You'll have to take a photo off of the website, uh, and merge it together.
I might.
Fantastic presentation. Fantastic, uh, thoughtful award. Yes. Councilwoman, Councilwoman McColsky. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to 4D, which is the zoning ordinance rewrite update presentation. And I believe I'll, is introducing this on behalf of the planning department.
Good evening, council and good evening, mayor. So this is just a quick presentation. As you all know, we are going through a zoning ordinance rewrite. We did select McKenna, uh, as our primary consultant. So we've been working with them, going through the process. Uh, we wanted to come before you tonight to touch base, talk about the timeline, see what we've been doing and uh, what we are gonna be doing in the future. Uh, we're gonna touch on our public engagement sessions. We had the first of four, uh, last Saturday at Urban Rest. Um, I'm, I'm told it was a, a great success. So we do have some, uh, some boards, some information that we've already gathered from that. Um, and uh, I guess without any further ado, I'd like to hand it over to Andrew Litman, who is our project manager for this. Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, Kyle, is it just this? Okay, very good. All right, well hello, it's, it's great to be here again. Good evening, coun-, council members. Uh, I'm Andrew Litman. Uh, I'm a senior planner at McKenna and I'm the project manager for the zoning rewrite project. Um, and tonight we wanna give you an update. We're, we're up and running on putting together Ferndale's new, modern, inclusive and sustainable zoning code. And it, it's not just me, we have a sizable team from McKenna. Uh, Laura Howe is our project director and a senior principal planner. Uh, Lauren, to my, uh, behind me is a project planner at McKenna with me today. Uh, also Mara, uh, from our office is a public engagement specialist. Uh, Hunter is a zoning specialist and we have a uh, graphics, um, our, our graphics person, Carrie, and also uh, Eric Gearlings, who is a civil engineer, who's also on our team, who's gonna help uh, with some more of the technical aspects. Uh, just our schedule at a glance, we kicked off last month. Uh, and uh, this month, we've put together a diagnostic review, which, which basically consisted of us going through line by line through your zoning code and comparing that with best practices. And it, that gave us kind of a, a, a very general outline of uh, how we will move forward writing a new code. Our public engagement, uh, as, as Lauren's gonna go through, we have four sessions. Uh, these will all take place from uh, July to August. Uh, and then our first draft, uh, we will provide you with the first draft in November of this year. A second draft, if, if needed, uh, in January. And then we will go through the public hearings and adoption process in January and February of next year. And this is a, this is a pretty aggressive schedule. This is a, this is one of the most condensed uh, schedules for a zoning ordinance that uh, that I've ever seen, but we, uh, but we're moving along nicely. So uh, Lauren is going to talk a little bit about our public engagement now.
Great, uh, thank you, Andrew. So as Andrew mentioned, uh, my name is Lauren Sayer. I'm a project planner with McKenna on this project and excited to give you guys a kind of brief overview of the public engagement strategy we have for this project. Uh, so firstly, we have our project website and uh, the QR code on the screen there links to it. It's uh, zoneferndale.com, so fairly easy to remember. Uh, this acts as a kind of a landing page, it has the public engagement, and we'll kind of talk about the project website a little bit more a little later. Additionally, we have, or we plan to uh, get social pinpoint going, and this is a great parallel to the in-person workshops. Uh, we plan to actually kick that off tomorrow. After the housing workshop, it'll have a lot of the same questions so that people who weren't able to make it out can actually still participate from home. Um, and this is again linked through that Zone Ferndale website. Uh, as Andrew mentioned, well, yeah, we have four workshops planned and we'll kind of touch on those a little bit more, uh, on the next slide. Additionally, we have five steering committee roundtables planned. We had our first one in June and then we have our next one actually tomorrow. We also plan to have individual stakeholder interviews. It's a great way to kind of get in-depth with people who might have a specific interest in the zoning ordinance or specialty. Uh, we also will have two draft plan feedback discussions and these will be through planning commission and city council. Uh, and that kind of ties into seven, we'll have ongoing city council and commission input throughout this process. So the workshops focus around housing diversity, which I'll turn it over to Andrew in a minute here. Downtown design, this one's upcoming actually this Thursday. Uh, racial equity, which we are planning for August 15th. And then sustainability, which is still tentative, but we are targeting uh, August 26th for that. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Andrew to talk about uh, last Saturday's housing workshop
All right, thank you very much. And we have some, uh, some boards that we'll show you from our, uh, from our workshop last Saturday.
Is there, is there a best place to stand for you, for everyone to see your camera?
Let's see.
Uh, maybe the main, like in the center aisle, the main camera. But it is upside down.
It is upside down. Details, small details. Okay, oh, thank you very much. So uh, it, on Saturday, we had our first workshop at Urban Rest. Uh, we had a solid turnout, which was great. Um, the workshop consisted of four different interactive stations with, um, uh, oh yeah, there were four different interactive stations and then we also had another board showing uh, housing statistics in the city. Uh, and each of these, on, on each of these boards, we had an educational component and then also an interactive component, uh, so getting feedback from uh, from the residents that drop by. Uh, our first board, which Lauren is, is holding up, is the welcome board. We asked visitors to place a sticky dot on the map to show us where they live. And we also asked them what they love about their Ferndale neighborhood. And common responses included walkability, the tree canopy, uh, parks, many dining options, and bike lanes. And I will, I, I will be going, because this just happened Saturday, I haven't done this yet, but uh, I will be going through these in, in more detail and writing up a formal summary, which we will post on the website. So, sorry Lauren, we're going to the next board already. So she's, she's gonna get some exercise. So the second board asked, what is housing diversity? Is that the one we have up? Cool, all right, well, what is housing diversity? Um, so on the one hand, uh, this uh, board went over how housing diversity is described in the new uh, planned Ferndale master plan. And then uh, we also asked, uh, what does housing diversity mean to you? Uh, so folks put down their, uh, their thoughts on that. Common responses included that there's a variety of price points, uh, that uh, housing stocks inviting to a diverse population, uh, mixed-use development, and also several, several folks, um, talked about supporting affordable housing. All right, moving on, the third board. Thank you very- Uh, the third board asked, what types of housing would you like to see within the traditional residential district and the urban residential district as it is today? And so residents voted on where they would like to see duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes and ADUs. And they also uh, gave us comments under each housing type. And this was really surprising. Um, and uh, it really encouraging because there was a broad range of support for duplexes, uh, triplexes and fourplexes. So that was, uh, that was great to see. And then the last board, which was on uh, housing and material preferences, we asked um, two questions. This asked, uh, what three housing typologies would you most like to see in your neighborhood? Uh, whether a single-family, duplex, triplex, a small apartment, ADU or bungalow court? And here again, we saw pretty, uh, pretty broad support for different types of housing typologies. And then this, we also asked here, uh, what residential facade materials would you want in your neighborhood? And different building materials included masonry brick, concrete masonry, uh, fiber cement board, vinyl, uh, stone composite panels, metal panels, wood, glass and shaker siding. Uh, here, I, I, I don't think uh, there were big surprises. Fiber cement board, stone composite panels and metal pan, uh, panels were not very popular. Uh, and the most popular were masonry brick and wood. But this is, uh, this is very helpful for us to get this feedback, uh, before we get into these sections of rewriting the zoning ordinance. Also, I would, would like you to know that we'll translate these boards onto the website by the end of the month. So uh, folks who couldn't come to our public engagement event can still uh, give us their feedback. Uh, as I said, I'll also compose a summary memo, uh, from all of our engagement events. And also, it was, it was great that uh, uh, some of you were able to, to show up. So um, not to, well, I guess I am putting you on the spot, but uh, uh, council member Polica, what did you, uh, what did you think?
Through the chair, if I may. I was very impressed, it was a great turnout. Uh, I was, uh, just as you, I was surprised to see some of the results on the, the housing types. Uh, I suspected that the uh, tri and quadplexes would not have been that favorable in some of the outlying areas of the city. But uh, according to the results, people were equally um, uh, fine with, with all types of housings, uh, throughout the city. And I think that's one of the reasons why we don't always rely on social media to drive us in where we wanna go. But uh, no, it was a great event and I enjoyed talking to a lot of residents that came out and uh, I look forward to the next one.
Hey, well, thank you very much, thanks for coming. And I, I also see that your, your colleague to your right, uh, also showed up. So I, uh, I, uh, thank you. I, I don't know if there's any thoughts that, that you wanted to share, but uh-
I just, I noticed that, uh, well, I, I think I came at the, the, the flow kind of slowed down a little bit.
Yes.
So I was able to kind of look at what you had. And I really appreciated, uh, the, the facts and statistics about the types of housing that we already have here in the community. Like I didn't realize it was such a low number of the duplexes and the, uh, uh, oops. Quad, what did I call it? What did you call it?
Quadplex.
Quadplexes, yes.
Yeah.
And, but I definitely see how they can be a benefit in the community. To be able to house four people in one spot or, or a couple of people in a spot would be really beneficial and I was happy to participate. I put my dots on like anyone else because I'm a resident like anyone else up here and I really appreciate all the work that you're doing.
All right. Well, thank you very, very much. And as I said before, these will now be put in City Hall, so we'll still continue to get, get feedback and, and also it will put, be put on the website. And I think we have some slides of the new Zone Ferndale website right here. There is a participation tab, information on all of our workshops, a description of our process, document library. So there's not that much there now, but as we produce more and more documents, we'll always throw it on the website for people. Also, just really quickly, we did meet with the Planning Commission and we had a very interesting activity for them. We were asking them about their different pain points or what is and what isn't working in the code today for them, what requirements are confusing that they believe should be clarified, and citywide, what are new developments that you want to see happen? So I, I don't want to spend too much time going into that, but it was, it was very interesting to get their take and also get feedback from the administration on where we should really be focusing our attention. And it, it was interesting too, how, how many different responses we had. A lot of people did, did say that one of the most important issues to them, where most changes needed was housing diversity, also temporary uses, and streamlined review process and reduce red tape, and then parking came up. But there were nine different items that folks listed as, as needing the most change. So that was interesting. And then lastly, we have finished the, our technical zoning audit diagnostic report, which I, I just mentioned before, where we've looked through the, the current ordinance and here like taken the existing section and have our proposed section for that and also proposed changes. So this will be a type of template, I guess, as we, as we go through the, the rewriting process. We will, we'll be discussing the, this zoning audit in detail with the Steering Committee and, and we meet tomorrow where we're going to do this and then also it will be, it will be on the website too. I believe that is it, but thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight and sharing our initial findings and first event. I think this is really good. Good start.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing the project progress.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, if anyone has any questions.
Comments from council?
Through the chair, I do have a, a comment and a question. One is, I, I have a level of discomfort with traditional residential and urban residential as terms that can be very loaded, almost dog whistles at times and so, but I also recognize that we're trying to use kind of shortcuts for density. Folks don't necessarily know what R1 and R2 are. But moving forward, I'd maybe love to see some different verbiage for those categories. And the, a question, I'm sort of curious, in the, in the open house, were there any either education components or discussion about durability or, and/or costs in the materials that people were rating? Because I suspect that aesthetics are one thing, but if people have the opportunity to reflect on durability and, you know, and how the cost of components factor into affordability, it might impact their responses. So I'm curious whether there was any dialogue around that.
No, but that's, yeah, that's, that's very interesting to, to think about. I guess, yeah, our, our feedback was just more general about which types of, of materials they, they prefer, which is important once we get into the material section of the, of the zoning ordinance. But I'll certainly keep that in mind when I continue talking to folks.
Thank you.
So yeah. And then the, the traditional versus the urban residential, I believe, believe those terms came from the master plan. So we had a map.
Adapted those.
Of that and.
Well, shame on us for using dog whistles.
But no, like the, the new, the new zoning ordinance will not, will not use those terms.
All right.
Through the chair, I had a very quick question. This walking tour that's coming up this week, what would, what are the expectations with the walking tour?
So actually Roger is going to, Roger Caruso is, is going to lead that and we're going to be stopping at different businesses, talking to them and then, so yeah, we'll be, we'll be walking around the downtown and then afterwards, we're going to meet back up and have a discussion about people's impressions, what are, you know, design elements that they would like to see more of, what design elements turn them off, so on and so forth. And then we'll be having that design workshop later that night.
Right. Thank you.
May I follow up on that question?
Sure.
There used to be a DDA Design Committee, which has been concluded, but some of those business owners are still active and so it might be helpful if the team reached out. And this was before Roger and before Kyle, so they wouldn't be aware.
Oh, okay.
That this was there, but it would be something for the summer to coordinate with, with the DDA.
Yeah, definitely.
To see if there can be outreach specifically to them because they've been involved in the design guiding, design committee, you know, helping do approval of certain businesses getting remodeled or a facade improvement grant.
All right. Yeah, thank you. Keep that in mind.
Through the chair. Yes, I was actually on that committee for a number of years and, but I do believe, don't want to put Summer on the spot, but I do believe that Roger has worked with Summer to communicate with all the downtown businesses to make them aware of this event and encourage them to participate.
In the event you don't get as many business owners participate, I would target them to contact.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Are there any other questions on this presentation?
Oh, thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to hit those dates and times one last time. So Thursday the 27th, I believe, here at 12:30. That is going to be the kickoff for our Downtown Design. So we actually are providing some food for that, some lunch. We do have a Eventbrite page. We are asking people to RSVP just because that helps us get an idea for attendance, for food. You don't have to RSVP, but it is helpful for us. Later that night, so again, still on Thursday, from 6:00 to 9:00, we will be at Schiffer Park, which is at 9 and Plantaville?
Yes.
Yes. So we will be set up there. That's part of Ferndale Street Sounds. So again, that's going to be a similar open house vibe to last Saturday. We are working with the Ferndale School System and developing our third public engagement, which is base of Brown Racial Equity. So we've been talking to the school board president and the, I know their, their spokesman, Robert, so we are, we actually met with the parent teacher board too. So we've been talking with them. That's going to be August 15th, 6:00 to 7:30 at Ferndale High School. And like I think Lauren mentioned, sustainability, we're still developing, but the other ones are confirmed and we are really looking forward to them. Hope to see you and anyone else watching there. Thank you.
Thanks. Great job Kyle and the team.
Oh, last but not least, we do have some photos of the event. We got a nice little collage.
I like that you are going out into the community and not making people uncomfortable.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to our final presentation, which is 4E, which is the new finance account being presented by our Finance Director, Phil.
Good evening, council. Take this off for a second. How are you guys doing this evening?
Good to see you, Phil.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to, as many of you know, we've been short-staffed for almost a year now and we finally have some relief. Finally. I have apologized to this woman at least 20 times since she started. She's only been a week and three days? Because she came into unfortunate circumstance with both myself being unavailable as well as Michelle being injured. She came in, hit the ground running. We started our preliminary audit last week and she was our boots on the ground, communicating with us via Teams and making things happen. So I am very encouraged and I'm very happy to introduce you to Ermonde Sims, our new administrator.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, welcome.
It's nice to meet you all. I come to you from the city of Livonia, where I was employed there a little over 24 years. And I left from an executive director position over there, Housing Department.
Well, we're so glad to have you here. Thanks for choosing Team Ferndale and, and jumping in on your first week into audits, no less. That is not an easy thing to do. So you're here. Thanks for, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And if I may, through the chair, will you, will you say your first name again, please?
Ermonde.
Ermonde.
E-R-M-O-N.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, we are now moving on to call the audience portion of the agenda where we set aside 30 minutes upfront for anybody to say what's on your mind. And I invite you to come up for three minutes and please adhere to our Discourse with Dignity guidelines, which are in the back of the room. And we're just glad you're here. And if this is your first time, thanks for coming. Hi.
Hi there. Janice Sema, owner of Jay's Funnel T Box, 22726 Woodward.
Janice.
Oh, hi. I'm just here to ask the City Council to reconsider the footprint of the DIY. Looking at the drawings online, it appears that the pedestrian alley that I leased from y'all is closed off on the north and south side. It is prime football season. We have Michigan, Michigan State, the Lions, and everybody else playing. All I'm asking for is push the barrier back to make it handicap accessible for folks to get through. It can be outside of the festival. I don't want anything to do with the festival. I just want folks to be able to get in the back door. Up until construction on Woodward started, 80% of our patrons come in the back door. It is our front door. With construction in two lanes down on Woodward, we are getting maybe 5% to 7% of customers through the front door. It is, it's our, it's the way into the building. And if the drawing, if I'm seeing the drawing correctly, it is completely sealed for the first time ever for DIY. I will be dead in the water. That's all I'm asking.
Janice?
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi Sharon.
Hi, I'm Sharon Chass and it's interesting that we're talking about zoning today because that's kind of what I wanted to come in and talk about today. One of the things I didn't touch base on, and I hope that they do add it to their profiles that they had presented as a retired builder, I'm somewhat familiar with what products are available. One of my concerns that's been ongoing is the container homes that we're building here in the city. Some of them are, have been built by builders who are responsible, builders and are using primary products and are following a timeline and getting all their permits and approvals and stuff. But one of them on the corner of Bermuda and Camborn, this build's been going on, I think, for over two years. And to watch the weather and how that's been affecting that build and the products, materials, and the workmanship bring me concern to when that home finally goes up for sale. It's similar to the same thing that happened with the one on Pine Crest, just north of Eight Mile, to watching that go in and then knowing that there's families and stuff moving into these homes. So I hope that when we're looking at zoning and ordinances with the type of construction that we're looking to do, that we look into having a tighter timeline and more accountability from our inspectors and from the builders who are pulling these permits. When I spoke with these builders, I said, how can you keep doing this? And they go, we just keep renewing our permits over and over and over again. And, and that brings great concern to me as being a responsible builder. And another thing that, we're doing all these multi-unit builds now. And Ferndale's known as a fun, funky, fashionable Ferndale, but our multi-build units are boring. They're square boxes, boring colors. They offer no, there's no curb appeal to these. There may be incentives as far as affordable housing goes and it brings people down here, but if you look at the loss directly across from here, when they built that, they had character to it, just the way they did their balconies and stuff like that. And I would like to see consideration for not only their products and how many units and where they're being built at, but also the design. When you go to Royal Oak, everything's a box in Royal Oak. And currently, the way Fern House came about, I mean, that's a terrible thing, right there on Nine Mile. I think we need to add more character to the plans that are being presented to the Planning Commission and being approved by council. So please look at design as well as affordability and accessibility as well. But the container homes have me concerned. I think we need to be tighter on what we're allowing to be done.
Thank you, Sharon. Did anybody else like to give a public comment tonight? All right. Seeing no one, I'm going to conclude a public comment and move on to our public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight, which is 6A, consideration of the special land use for application for 1401 Pharaoh. And there's four steps to our public hearings, which is a presentation by, step one is a presentation by our city staff and the applicant if they so choose wish to present at the same time. Step two is asking council for questions of fact of staff and the applicant. And then three, we open it up for the public hearing for public comment on this item. And then four, we move into a discussion and a motion debate. So, welcome back Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. So this is a public hearing for special land use at 1401 Pharaoh. We have the site up here. So this is located really in the heart of our general industrial district. That's Zone M1. So it is located roughly at the corner of Pharaoh and Academy. This project is brought to you by McDermid. So McDermid is located just to the south at 1221 Pharaoh. So McDermid does produce chemical products and they do ship them, you know, to their customers and clients. They leased this property last year. So if you're having a little bit of deja vu, there's a reason for that. You did see this back in September of last year. So they leased this, the subject property, 1401, which is just to the north. So they leased this subject property, 1401, which is just to the north, and it was a vacant site. They did receive special land use from City Council last September to allow them to utilize the site for chemical products. We did include a condition that they were limited only to the storing and handling of chemical products. So the general flow is that they produce the chemical products at their primary facility. Last year, we did approve a walkway that goes between the two sites. It's a little bit of covered walkway. And we also approved some pre-engineered docking stations so they could store these products in the warehouse at the subject site and trucks could come up and pick them up. I believe that was always sort of temporary. And so now they have come forward to expand the use at the site. So they are proposing a 12,400 square foot expansion of the warehousing, and that's going to be used just for these storage. They are also proposing to install a permanent truck well. So in terms of site changes, it's really not that big. But the reason we're back here tonight is any kind of intensification or expansion of a special land use, they have to come back and make the same request once again. So as compared to last year, here is the site. Building three is existing, building two is existing, and this U-shaped building one, consisting of two warehouses and the breezeway between them, that's all out there right now. This portion here, D and E, these are the warehouse expansions, and F is where the permanent truck well is proposed. This G was an outbuilding which got removed as of the last year's approval. So I think that's all I have. I'd like to bring up the architect, Wayne, just to say hello and add anything that we might have missed. This did go to Planning Commission a few weeks ago. We did not have any public comment at that time, and it was approved unanimously. And as was the recommendation for special land use. We do want to keep that same condition to limit it to handling and storage of chemical products only. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Wayne Dutton. I am with Sidoc Group. We are the architects and engineers for the project and prepared the drawings that are before you today. Kyle did a fantastic job explaining it. We have been here before in the past. Just the logistics of their company, and they knew they would head this direction someday, and someday is here now. And we're adding square footage to the building for exactly what Kyle explained, storage and shipping and receiving of their products. There's no fabrication in the building whatsoever. They have some fabrication elements of the business on the neighboring property. But again, this is all storage racks and shipping and receiving from the permanent truck well. I don't know if you've had a chance to look through this in detail, but I can briefly walk you through it. Again, as Kyle said, there's three buildings on the site, one, two, and three. Our addition is focused on building one, which is the two warehouses in breezeway today. And we're simply expanding those with the blue. Gives you an idea of what the building looks like today. It's a metal-sided building with some EPHIS material in the lower portion. This is more of a detailed site plan here. Again, went through the Planning Commission, landscaping requirements, parking requirements, electrical vehicle parking requirements, bicycle parking. And we got approval from the Planning Commission as far as those aspects. This sheet here is the outdoor areas needed for employee use, shown in the dark gray. This here is just an example of the current floor plan today, just to give you a sense as to what is there. Again, two large warehouse areas with a breezeway in between. And this is your proposed floor plan. Zoom out a little bit here. Again, where my cursor is here, existing warehouse space, existing breezeway, which gets modified with an addition, existing warehouse B. The upper left is just an extension, again, of pure warehouse area. The center warehouse plus staging area for the truck wells themselves. There are going to be five bays for trucks. Aesthetics of the building is pretty straightforward in that we are, our additions relative to the entire facility are fairly small, so we didn't feel it would be appropriate to introduce a lot of new materials. So we are simply mimicking the metal-sided building. And then finally, we have our landscape plan. We're adding a variety of trees at the rear and street side of the property, as well as a shrub row here, or a buffer, if you will, between the existing parking lot and Pharaoh Street. Fairly straightforward program. Given the nature of the project. You have any questions?
Thank you. I will open it up for...
Public hearing?
What, we usually ask... Yes, sorry. We usually do the public hearing first so that we can hear, council can hear the questions from the residents. So I am now going to open up the public hearing at 8:26 PM. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to give comment on the special land use application for 1401 Pharaoh? All right. Seeing no comment, public comment on the public hearing. I'm also going to close public comment at 8:27. Now, Kyle, if you want to come back up if there's questions from Council. And usually, we have the representative to the Planning Commission from Council, if you wish, would like to make a comment first, that would be helpful.
I can briefly. This was really dry for the Planning Commission. We had just seen it in September as a temporary request. I think the business was surprised that they'd be moving so quickly to a permanent solution. So, you know, we see no different, we saw no difference between their temporary request to this permanent request for permanent structures. So it was approved unanimously. I will note that there were some, some changes to the landscaping plan that didn't appear on the drawings. Two of them were, well, one of them was the introduction of some islands for rainwater management. And were there also some trees that were going to be... I thought we had talked about where the shrubs were. I thought we had pushed that out and we were going to add trees there as well.
Yes, yeah, you are correct. So we did approve the site plan with those conditions. And what Councilman Pollocka is referring to, this is area along here on the front, which does have a shrub row, which is required for parking lot screening. They do have some room to work here, so they're going to bump this out a little bit and plant I think three or four trees right there.
And then at the end of those three, well, at least the end of the two.
Yeah, I think these two end caps.
Yeah. There was conversation between putting in trees or putting in rain gardens. My suggestion was rain gardens because usually when you're looking at islands that small, those trees struggle for water. So having something more of in line with a rain garden will at least, you know, put the water into the ground instead of the sewer system.
Any questions from Council?
Through the chair, I have a quick question about landscaping, so building on that. Is there any flexibility in maybe substituting out the Bradford pear and the Burning Bush because both of those are horribly invasive in Michigan? And it would be preferable to have more native species?
No, I think the applicant is fine with working with us on the tree selection, and that's something we can handle administratively. I'll make a note of that.
All right.
Through the chair, it's interesting that you bring that up because that may be something we want to look at with zoning, looking at encouraging more native plantings. So, thank you, Council.
As a connection, we do that for residential front yard, but hasn't made its way into industrial or business. So good connection point there. All right, we would need a motion to proceed.
I move after a properly noticed public hearing and the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission that you have approved the special land use application for the facility handling and storing chemicals deemed hazardous by the state or federal regulations for 1401 Pharaoh Street being parcel 24-25-35-105-07, based on the plans dated June 29, 2023, and adopt the findings of the Planning Commission that the request meets and satisfies the review standards set forth in 24-273 of the zoning ordinance subject to the following conditions within the packet.
Support. Moved by Pollocka and supported by Leaks May.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes. And that is approved unanimously. And so that concludes our public hearing, and I'm moving on to the consent agenda. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
And I will read it in entirety and then Council may choose what it would like to do. 7A, approval of the July 10, 2023 meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the Ferndale Police Department to auction and dispose of lost and abandoned property via property room in accordance with local ordinance number 11427-10-29 and state law as stated. 7C, approval of the special event permit for the 2023 DIY Street Fair to be held September 22 through the 24 on 2023. 7D, approval of the special event permit for the 2023 Funky Ferndale Art Fair to be held on September 22 through the 24 of 2023. 7E, approval of the special event permit for the 2023 Out of the Darkness Walk to be held Saturday, October 7, 2023. And 7F, approval of the special event permit for the 2023 Festival Hispano Americano to be held October 14 through 15 of 2023. 7G, approval of the listed appointments and reappointments to city boards and commissions. 7H, approval to renew the annual contract with Resource X for priority-based budgeting tools, website, and support, and the amount of $15,000. 7I, approval of payment for community risk reduction and community education materials from positive promotions. 7J, consideration of a downtown parking study update implemented by Fishback Consulting. 7K, approval to schedule a public hearing to consider the proposed vacation of the east-west public alleyway between East Ten Mile and Mapledale Streets for the August 28, 2023 City Council meeting. 7L, approval of the city manager employment contract. 7M, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the Finance Director and subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. What is the desire of Council tonight?
I motion to approve the consent agenda with the following change, moving 7C from the consent agenda to the regular agenda 8B.
Second.
For reference, sorry, Mayor, that is the approval of the special event permit for the 2023 DIY Street Festival Fair to be held September 22 through 24, 2023.
May I make a small suggestion, as I cannot approve a motion or second? Is it possible to pull the special event permit for the 2023 DIY Street Fair? I think there's a small amendment that can be made to address... That was part of his motion. Oh, was that part of it? How did I miss that?
That was the whole motion.
Oh, my God, I did. I totally did not miss...
The whole motion was to approve the consent agenda with the movement of 7C to 8B.
Totally missed that. Oh, my God. Sorry.
I'm glad it's not just me today. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was reviewing, I was triangulating the agenda with the agenda on the map, so I missed it. All right. Move along. There's nothing to see here.
Pollocka?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
All right. We're going to regular agenda item 8A, which is consideration of the service agreement between the city of Ferndale and charge infrastructure to install 10 electric vehicle chargers and two municipal parking lots.
Council and Mayor.
Hi. James, welcome.
James, the city's facilities in Soon Fleet Manager. So just to introduce this problem real quick, or this item real quick. The project is part of the General Motors Dealership Community Program. And what they're trying to do is expand the charging that will be required to meet the demand of what we expect, just increased EV ownership by 2030. They're trying to increase charging to about $40,000 throughout the United States and Canada. And they're going to local municipalities and other organizations to give them some benefits and some contributions to make it a little easier to invest in EV charging infrastructure because that initial cost can be hard for communities to bear. So I just put together a very small, quick slideshow presentation that just kind of shows the costs, what we expect to add, where we expect to put them. I'll just kind of briefly summarize that and then we can get to questions if we have any. So this program is expected to bring, or is designed to bring, 10 total plugs or ports in two different locations. Lot number two is the Withington lot that's expected to have three dual-port, level-two chargers. Level-two chargers, I could be wrong. Oh, also, this is Ryan with Charge Infrastructure. He's the technical expert on the charging equipment and the installation.
Can you talk on the microphone a little bit?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Ryan is here to answer any questions that I can't, and then I'll just continue to summarize. We have six total ports or plugs. Those will be installed in the Withington lot behind Bobcat Bonnys. Lot number 10, which is considered the library lot, there's going to be two dual-port, level-two chargers, four ports total, and that's kind of directly behind the Emery. The cost for the project in total around $245,685. That includes a 15% contingency. Typically, we would include 10, but due to the level of complexity and bringing electrical to it, there's some unknown variables, so we decided to add the extra 5%. The costs, so yeah, electrical infrastructure should be around $81,300. Civil site work should be about $25,900. Labor and engineering should be about $53,900. Equipment and software should be about $54,900. And then with the contingency, that brings us to $245,685. And like I said, it's a pretty high cost, and it seems like a high cost. Typically, the big cost is going to be bringing power to the equipment. And in this case, these are two locations that don't have the power and will require like circuit panels, some electrical, some cement work, and then the equipment itself. GM, as you'll see, GM pays for the equipment, the warranty, and the software for the first five years, GM, and then they split that cost with a dealership, local dealership. DT contributions and rebates will pay for about $107,000 on the project. So that'll bring the city's total cost to $83,000, expected cost to $83,685. And that's for 10 ports or plugs, so that gives us a per-port cost of about $8,368. If we were going into this project on our own, our per-port cost would be roughly $24,000 per port or per plug. So a quick timeline, right now, we're planning. If this gets approved, we will sign the documents. Engineering, DT coordination, and bidding will start immediately. That'll be in the fall. It should go into winter and then roughly early spring, we'll have the construction and closeout, and then we'll have everything on-site and ready to go. And then one thing that I did want... that I did want to manage, or mention about the locations, is one of the attachments to this item is a master plan list in which the DPW kind of coordinated and supported just the planning of where to put these different units. There's a lot of good information. If you don't want to read the boring part, you get to page 15, and it kind of lays out why we need extra chargers in the city. It tells you how many we have currently, which is basically the seven at the dot, and then we're looking to get about 40. And then we based a lot of this, a lot of the reasoning for where we're going and why we need to do it is listed in here, and it's based on just support documentation from the industry. There's a lot of good, like, maps and charts that show where chargers currently are, where they're needed, how many we expect we'll need, and there's a lot of good information there. So that's probably it. I can answer questions, and then Ryan can answer any other questions that you have.
Through the chair. This might sound like a really dumb question, but what's sort of the expected, and I know that this is a certain element of predicting the future, but what's the expected sort of longevity of, of these?
So I believe the expected life for an EV charger is roughly 10 to 15 years. Some of the ones that we have now that we're pulling out of circulation are at those locations. Those are functionally obsolete. They were put in place in 2012. They were put in place a long ago that charging back for electricity wasn't really a thought. These new chargers, and that, that is stated in our master plan. We plan on charging customers for the electricity that they use. It won't be something where we charge a large fee. There's an industry standard just to collect what the city does pay for in electricity to charge those batteries. But we expect that these will last 10 to 15 years.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, just kind of educate me. So I guess I'm noticing that because we have seven existing level-two chargers, and we're going to add another 10, can you explain to me what the level-two means? Is this something that we have to upgrade from at some point in the future, or what does that mean exactly?
Yep. I'll actually let Ryan answer that, because he's probably a little better at explaining that than me.
All about time.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that's a great, pretty much the explanation right there. So level one is pretty much non-existent anymore. That's something you think, like, I'm going to plug in my outlet in the garage, and it's going to charge very, very slowly. Level two versus three, so level three is going to be when you think of, like, the superchargers that are going to charge, start to finish in, like, 20 minutes. A level-two is what we're seeing on average around the US. That's what they're putting in, in malls and everything. It's the main public charger, because the level threes have a huge expense, not only for the equipment itself, but they draw a lot more power, needing a bigger utility upgrade as well. So the level twos, what we're seeing, generally, they're anywhere between 9.6 kilolots to as high as 19.2 kilolots. On average, with most cars that we're seeing now, we can, you can be able to get a full charge usually within a couple hours of that still, so not as quick as the level-three, but it's going to be substantially better than what's in the ground before.
They can plug in, go to dinner, and be back out and be charged?
Exactly.
Okay, understood. All right.
I was curious about apps and to download an app in order to use these chargers. ChargePoint and EV Go are the two, is this a third different type of app that you would need to use in order to use the chargers?
Yeah, this equipment is Flow, which is actually a pretty popular brand as well. Ryan can answer this question, but I believe that there is an app, and they probably have a QR code scan on the app, and then go on your phone, and then that will charge you a connect fee, and then whatever the city determines to be the electricity fee.
Yeah, no, that answers the question perfectly. Yep, so it'd be an app through Flow. They'll be, through the Flow app, they'll be able to find chargers throughout the city as well as other cities. They're all going to be connected through software, and through the software, it's going to be a QR code that you can scan. Then as well too, I believe they come with our, a small number of RFID cards as well.
And is Flow becoming the preferred app for the state of Michigan, or is it still whatever charging company gets in with the city? Because it's becoming like parking apps. There's a, each city has their own parking app, and now there's going to be multiple apps and chargers in the city. I know this is an industry problem, not a city problem. So I'm an EV driver, so, you know, I just, I'm collecting apps.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that there is a standard for the state of Michigan or a preferred vendor. The two that you mentioned, plus Flow, and there's a few, there's a handful of others. I think that that is an industry-wide problem, and that at some point, it'd be nice if there was some universalization, so that you're collecting all in the same app. But I don't believe that that is a problem that would be inherent and that should stop us from putting a few different chargers out there. As, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge going forward, because some of these grants and some of these third-party partnerships are going to kind of have their own preferred vendors, and the city needs to, as it can, find partners and find grant money available. And that just means that we may have three or four different pieces of equipment and service, but typically, typically they perform in the same way in the collection, and, and it's pretty much these, these companies, the software collects money and then sends the city a check as a reimbursement for that utility.
Through the chair. So I believe it was mentioned that GM is going to be covering the cost of these for the first five years, and then afterwards, it's going to split the cost with a dealership. Does this mean that the dealerships will be branding their device, these devices with their logos or with advertising?
That's a good question.
So yeah, as part of the, as part of the GM community project, the dealership will have their logo on the chargers. I believe we are looking to use, Les Stanford has volunteered for the city.
And the other thing is, is when we first started talking about this, my understanding was that the city wouldn't have to pay anything. And now I'm under the, now I'm being made aware that we have to pay $83,000 for these chargers. So I, I am a little shocked that we're having to put so much toward these devices, especially when I, I was under the impression that we were actually getting these for free. Is there any grants out there that can help cover these costs?
There are grants, and we have, the DPW has submitted a packet for the city. That's not part of this program, but we are hoping to successfully go through that grant application process, and that's for another, an additional, I want to say 33 plugs. No, I'm sorry, 23 plugs to bring us up to 40 total, but that's.
When you say plugs, do you mean units, or are you talking about putting plugs onto existing?
So, I'm sorry, I'm using plugs and ports interchangeably. What we're talking about on this one are 10 dual-port, or five dual-port chargers to bring us 10 plugs total. So it's one unit, two plugs off the sides. The grant application, and I'm sure Joe can speak to this as well, but there will, I'm sure, be a presentation, and we'll go into a little more detail on that grant application process if we're successful, and I can also go over some of this, some of the information that we do have in the master plan. But this grant will not be available at this time. So this is something that's through the GM program, and what we've got is what we have until we do or we do not get this grant.
Yeah, through the chair, I can speak to the funding a little bit. We proposed for this specific project to upfront the spending using ARPA dollars. The actual nature of this expense fits well within the stated federal goals for ARPA, as well as it aligns with the infrastructure bill that was passed last year. But we have actually submitted, we have two active grants, well, one active grant with the state, and I've just recently received a denial enforcement from the state. However, we were just outside of the 10 grants that they did approve, but our application was strong, and they encouraged us to resubmit again, and they're opening up applications this fall. So we'll be resubmitting the application again, and that was for actual fast charger. It would be fully funded by the state.
But for clarity, that's for units outside of this project?
Correct. That is correct. Yes. For the purposes of this project, we proposed use, use of ARPA fund. It would be a good use of ARPA fund because of the, well, the, frankly, per-unit cost was dramatically improved with the rebates. As Jim said, it was, without assistance, it'd be about $24,000 per unit. With this assistance, it's about $8,300. So we saw the, the return on investment there.
And just to reiterate, I think you said five years maintenance, right? GM covers the five-year maintenance, so any upgrades to, if the chargers need upgrades or maintenance or fixing, that is something that.
Yeah, and that is.
Cover. We don't, we won't absorb those costs and get another bill for, like, $1,000 to repair a charger over the next five years.
Right. So that's for the first five years, and then after the, the sixth year, the city will, it'll be incumbent upon the city to reach out to Flow and pay for either a maintenance program or software extension. The cost for, cost for sixth year for all chargers is about $8,900 per year. And that seems like a lot, but it's not. We, we expect that we'll get about $5,000 in revenue per port just from using the statistics and data that we've gathered from the seven that are in service at the dot. Now, those numbers can change a little bit. I'm not sure how EV usage is going to be six years from now, but looking at the current usage at the dot, we expect that those will be revenue-neutral at a minimum.
Through the chair, I would acknowledge Bruce, Bruce Campbell, our parking directors. Can he have any operational questions? He's available.
Through the chair. But that's revenue, so that's $5,000 revenue out of that we have to pay for the electricity. So what's the profit that we receive? Because if we're, if we're spending $5,000 in, in electricity and we're collecting $5,000, then we're still having to, you know, make an investment in these devices.
Yes, and that, that would be something I can get you. I would like to coordinate a little bit with Bruce on that, just to make sure that we're on the same page, and I can come up with something that accurately shows whether these do or do not pay for revenue, uh, pay for themselves within a year's time.
Councilman Pollock, you bring up a good point. And I know the DTE charger that we had for 10 years, right, that never got any upgrades, did it? It just, people still used it, and it worked, but I don't, if it ever went down, I don't know how it got fixed. Never heard that it ever broke, which I guess says about the quality of the 10-year charger that we got. If it never, you know, the city fixed it.
Yeah. There, there had some electrical failures a few times, and we actually ended up working on the electrical panel and actually replacing the guts.
Oh.
A couple of years ago. Through the chair, that, that, that particular unit, we were early adopters with the Blink Network. I can take you back to 2011.
Yes.
And that, the servicer or the guts on that changed three different suppliers between 2011 and 2018 or 19. As the industry has matured, I don't think any of those two suppliers are in business today.
Through the chair, but we weren't collecting any revenue off of those, and we weren't having to, and the residents were, I'm sorry, that's the same answer. Residents were, had to pay for those, so we weren't collecting any revenue.
The charge should have been the same as any other meter charge, so it would have been butt hour.
You were paying.
We are collecting revenues. You're paying the park. You're just not paying.
We paid the park, but you weren't paying for the electrical meter.
Correct. That, that's an industry-wide shift that's starting to happen, and Ferndale is just moving with that shift, moving off of paid space parking towards electric rates to actually fully get recouped for the cost. Yeah.
So people will be paying for the space and electricity?
I'm going to actually, Bruce is right here. So Bruce, can you speak into the mic, please, clarify?
I would like to add, Councilman Pollock, that, so looking at my spreadsheet, that I figured for about five cents per kilowatt-hour in profit per unit, and that did come out to about, uh, do, 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 uh, daily revenue net per port of about $13.89 a day, and then just using that and calculating it forward, it does appear that these would be profitable, not just for electricity.
Thank you.
And Bruce will tell you what he expects as the connection fee, and that is not included in the numbers that I put together.
Thank you, mayor, council members, city manager. Yeah, the, the goal is, once these units are installed, we will, a, a user will pay the parking fee, and there will be a separate fee for the electricity based on whatever the agreed-upon rate is that council approves. I don't have a handle on the connection fees at this time. I need to wrap my arms around this, but operationally, those two things will be separated, and we'll, we'll treat them, and we'll report on them, just like we report on other fees collected through the parking system.
Through the chair. With the, was it six or seven electric spaces in the dot? Okay. Are we planning on using the Flow app for those as well and charging for those spaces, so charging for the electric, not the space, or both?
Yeah, if, if, if the app can be, if the two different vendors, if the app can be, you're asking if the Flow app can be used in the dot. Zep Energy, I, I don't think we're going to be able to do that, but I think we can explore it and ask them. Yeah.
That may not be possible. Let me go back to that question. We'll just have two, two equipment vendors, and then those will collect separately the same fees.
Can I, can I ask a future, a future question that may or may not happen? If we get this grant, and we, we reapply for the state grant, and we get money, are we now get to go with a current vendor or a new vendor for EV charging? I know it's a, the industry is rapidly deploying, you know, vendors and services, and this is another early adopter GM dealership program to bring more EVs to your community. And if you go to the state of Michigan Community EV Toolkit, you'll see that Ferndale is one of the fewest communities that have a fleet management policy for EVs. I mean, like, we're really with just less than, I don't know, 10 cities, and we're the only one in South Oakland County who has made this investment. So it feels, honestly, it feels exciting, but it also feels weird, because we could have three different EV chargers in the city, and I don't know, it makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable, because it's clunky.
Through the chair, I, I share the discomfort, and it's funny, I, my first feedback to all of this months ago was my concern for multi-apping.
Yeah.
But the industry is frankly not regulated right now. You have Stellantis latching on to a certain vendor, GM latching on to a vendor, Tesla obviously having significant influence on the market. Zep Energy competitively won that bid just three years ago with the dot, and that was a nationwide bid. And that, Zep Energy's in Ann Arbor and in Grand Rapids. At least they were at the time. So, and they're, they're still active.
Yeah, and ChargePoint is downtown Detroit and all of the Quicken Loans.
This is, and I have given feedback on behalf of the city to our representatives in Congress, that this is, with the adoption of the infrastructure bill, this is the policy side that needs attention. Because it, in my words, it's, it's the Wild West out there. However, that, there's, you know, that, the lack of regulation is also forcing against the, the very quick and accelerated rate of change for EV infrastructure. We have a, so we have to, we could delay that, but that also puts us at a competitive disadvantage, I think, to other cities that are going to be bringing on EV units. So.
You are okay with clunkiness?
We can accommodate your electric vehicle.
Yeah.
Could I, could I point out one thing, too, that the, the lower cost in all of this is the equipment itself. So a large majority of this, roughly 66% off the top of my head, is mostly infrastructure investment, and that money is not, even if we at some point came out and said, you know what, let's replace all of this equipment, all that, 66% of that cost is not going to be a lost cost because all that infrastructure is there, it's in the ground, our panels are there. It would just be a matter of almost like plugging something in. You're just taking that equipment, you're changing it out, you're plugging it into the infrastructure investment that you've already made that's in place and in the ground. So like the DOT, if we were talking about that, let's say we decided, we really like Flow, let's get rid of these Level 2 chargers. At the DOT, you would just take those seven. The cost per port for equipment is probably closer to $4,000, so you multiply that by seven, and that's about what your cost would be. It wouldn't be $24,000 times seven because all of your equipment and your infrastructure is already there, it's in the ground, it's in place. So at some point, if we can unify under this single vendor and equipment, we will be able to do so as, as units naturally end their lives. So maybe ZEP isn't the best. Seven years from now, eight years from now, when that equipment begins to go out of service, and if we like Flow, then all of a sudden we have seven Flow to go with our 10 that we're adding now. Flow, I believe, is a vendor for DTE. I think they have roughly six preferred equipment vendors, and maybe 10 years from now, that, that gets whittled down a bit. Maybe we're all using the same thing. Maybe we can look in our grant application whether we would like Flow or possibly move to ChargePoint. But I think at some future date, we, we will be able to unify, but as Joe said, that's just, the industry's not there yet.
Policy is not there. Okay. That's helpful to understand. Yeah. We have the but-for problem, right?
Through the chair, James makes a good point with the investment. The set, covering the utility costs upfront, we're really talking about the more marginal costs, I mean, in the scope of things. So the grant still funds a significant, about 70% of the infrastructure, which you'll need to do anyway at some point to retrofit these lots to accommodate EV.
I'm going to open up for public comment. We have a, someone who'd like to ask a question.
Hi, Sharon Chess. My concern is with putting these units, like all in the Withington lot. How will that affect a business or residential area if we have a power or brownout kind of thing? Will they be more susceptible to be out of power longer, or will the infrastructure that they're going to build add additional support to those businesses and residents that are in the nearby area? Because in talking with DTE workers that are kind of going down and redoing everything, they're saying, if you, so on a Friday and Saturday night, when all the EVs come in and they're plugging in, and they're gone for the evening to all the different venues around here, or a festival, and everybody's plugged in at one time, and then we have a sudden electrical storm, will those cars be affected? Will the resident or will the businesses be affected in that regard?
So without being an electrical expert, my understanding is that at the most, you'll bring power that's already available to a transformer, from that transformer to a circuit panel. And then, so this would really be, the amount of power that we're talking about for these would, would be roughly equivalent to putting a building or something in service. I don't believe that that would cause any issue like that, but that would be a question that I could follow up with, with DTE on.
Through the chair. It's interesting, your, your location, question actually brought to mind is, where exactly are these going to be located, lots? Are we going to make them very convenient, you know, the, the, you know, the Doris Day parking, you know, right next to the handicap spaces where it's, you know, they get the premium spaces, or are we putting them against like the concrete wall or, you know, further away?
So to answer your question, if you look at the charge infrastructure master service agreement and go to page 11, they have a pretty good overhead graphic. We supplied them a map from Giffo's, and they kind of overlaid where we expect the new parking spots to be. And yeah, B1, page 11, is the library lot. And just to confirm, I believe, yep.
Where the existing charger is now.
Right. And page 12 shows the proposed area for the Withington lot.
And is that because there's electrical infrastructure built off of there?
Yeah. So really what we're trying to do is maximize, maximize our spent, or minimize our spend, maximize our value. So the way we located these first two properties and the way we located other ones, which you can see the logic of why we did this in our larger master plan, but we try to minimize costs by keeping it as close to electricity as possible, by trying to keep the amount of cement work to a minimum. Addition, yeah, so electric close by, not only is it close by, but the amount of power is available off the pole, so that's kind of why you see these are right around Woodward and Nine, because there's a lot of businesses, there's enough power to power these units. We, just additionally, if I could, I would say that we located them next to public transportation rental areas, so we have larger apartment complexes near both of these locations. And we also wanted to make sure that there is an area where it would be accessible, because the industry standard and the standard that we hold here is that we will make sure that there is an ADA accessible EV next to these locations, and there's already like curb cuts and other things that make it easier and make these spots more accessible.
If I may as well, part of the reason to, not only to minimize cement work, but also the further the charges are from the electricity, the bigger conduit we have to have to be able to account for electricity drop-off as well.
And I will say as well that charge infrastructure and Giffo's helped us locate these locations and made sure that they were as near utilities as possible.
Yeah, it's a retrofit. It's an interesting spot to be in. I see brains churning over here, so. Are there any more questions from council?
Through the chair, I would just be clear. Anytime we use outside funding for a project, we will have control on the app side of things. It's going to be with whatever the state's preferred vendor is. GM's preferred vendor, Stellantis as you will. So that's, that is the trade-off with accepting outside funding.
If, if we get a grant from the state, we could be in the same spot with that grant.
Could be. So the alternative would be to not pursue the outside funding.
Which then makes the whole...
It would slow, it would slow progress, for sure.
Well, yeah. I don't think we would spend $285,000 for sure. I wouldn't. But this subsidy makes it a little bit more palatable and moves us towards our, our goal.
The state, the state offerings are also essentially the federal infrastructure bill being filtered down through the state. So whatever those standards that the federal government are, they're likely going to influence the state grant funding. It's all infrastructure money.
Yes.
If I may, through the chair, how did we decide on the 10, just out of curiosity? Just, was it, did it average out as far as the funding, or how did we decide on additional?
You know, that's a good question. I think we just decided on 10 because we had talked about adding 10 initially as like a phase one as part of our master plan. We didn't want to make a larger project. Anything over that, we knew that we needed the 40 roughly throughout the city, but we have that big grant that we potentially could get, so it didn't really make sense to do more than 10. But you don't want to do less than 10 because when you do less than 10, it drives up your per-port cost. That's the same reason that initially we thought, well, maybe we can put two ports there, two ports here, two ports here, and two ports here in four different locations. And the reason that you can't do that is you should have a dig-once approach because the infrastructure is really what costs you money. So when you put 10 in two locations, you're only installing infrastructure in two locations. So really, industry standard is for Level 2 chargers, you should look to do around 6 to 10, and we wanted to do two locations on both sides of our Nine Mile and Woodward corridor. The library lot's a little bit smaller, so we decided to go with four there. Decided to go with six at Withington because we knew we had room. 10 seemed like a good number, and then we kind of knew what the numbers would come out with, and we thought that that would be a project that we could handle.
Through the chair. This is probably for Bruce. How often are our existing spaces used? I mean, I know that when I drive through the parking structure or through the library lot, eight times out of 10, no one's in those spaces. You know, they're empty. The only time I see them completely filled is during special events. And like in this instance, DIY or Pig and Whiskey, when they take over that lot, no one's using those.
I think, Councilman, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think what we're seeing anecdotally without having the stats in front of us is...
Yeah, I know.
On Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, we get almost 80% utilization, especially in the DOT. On daytimes and, you know, non-weekend evenings, it's very minimally utilized. So I think the numbers that we're basing the revenue projections on are primarily based on those Thursday, Friday, Saturday night numbers. Now, there is some, what we do get, and I'll say this with understanding that it's an issue we have to fix, what we do get oftentimes during the day are people that come in and park, charge their vehicles for a long, we have a four-hour window that they're supposed to utilize and move their vehicles. Oftentimes, that's not the case. There is an enforcement piece to this that we're going to have to make sure that we focus on when we do this. Charging for the electricity will help us with that because we can penalize them, or not penalize, but we can increase the fines and, and, you know, the, the, the compliance issues once we institute payment for the electricity. So I, I think the evenings and weekends, on weekends, are when we see the most utilization. There's been a few Fridays in a row when I see all seven charging stations being utilized. And so, again, I need to see the data to answer that question more accurately, but those are the key times.
I'm just, through the chair, I'm just wondering if, well, let me back up. So I know that by adding these devices to the Withington lot, you could be reaching a new audience, because someone who is, you know, parking in the Withington lot, I doubt that they're parking in the DOT just to use the electricity. So you may have...
I do that.
You do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So you don't think that we'll be, so you don't think that we'll be gaining new customers by putting them into a new lot? Because my proposal was going to be instead of putting the other ones in the library lot, maybe put it into the Breckenridge lot or, or some other lot that we currently don't have units in, to reach a different audience. But apparently, it wouldn't matter.
Car, EV car owners go on their app and they see where the chargers are, and then they go find them and they plug in. That's how it works. And so if there's none there, they can't charge. So, but we're kind of like moths to light. You go where the chargers are. And so, because that's where the electricity is. And, and so I, I think, I understand your train of thought there, but I don't think it applies to the rapid transition to EV that's happening in our region, which is expected to increase over time. And so, you know, it's, it's 10 chargers, it could help with employees coming to work in Ferndale who commute in, who, we have a high commuter rate into Ferndale, not only for visitors, but I can guarantee the $5 charge after your four hours will get you to move your car. And so I think that's what we would need to do, rather than say, we are going to enforce it. Just do it by the app charging after four hours and you've taken care of it. So people don't want to, it's just like gas. People don't like to pay the higher gas prices. People don't want to pay over what their four-hour of charging an extra $5.
Through the chair, they bring a good point. Jim or Bruce, can you just clarify what will happen to the existing older charger stations?
Yeah, so the two existing, as I said, are functionally obsolete. They're not reliable. We can't collect to pay for the electricity use, so those will be removed. Those will be moved to DPW, and then those will be reused for fleet. So as we get, plug in electric vehicles in our fleet, those will be used. They don't have to be as reliable, and we're not worried about collecting electricity because they're city vehicles. And if I could just interject and go back for Councilmember Pollock. In the master plan document, I put together some statistics on page six based off of the data that we pulled from ZEFNet, and what we see is average kilowatt hours per charger at the DOT is about 11.99, and that's 7.9 average sessions per charger at the DOT. So that's roughly 4950 per day. And those, the data that I pulled off of ZEFNet, I believe, is for all of 2022, and that is what I used to extrapolate whether these chargers would be revenue neutral.
I just drove to Meyer on Friday and plugged in for 30 minutes on the Level 3 charger there because I had to drive over 100 miles somewhere. And, kind of weird, but all the cars and people sit there on their phones for 30 minutes waiting for their cars to charge. But people are really driving there to get the Level 3 and fully charge in 30, 30, 40 minutes. And so it's just, this transition is underway and for Teslas. Does your app, by chance, just take credit card instead of having to pay for the charging without actually creating an account to use the charger? That's the EV Go does that, which is I was thankful I didn't have to stand there and create another, download an app and create an account in order to use the charger?
Yeah, so I'll need, I can definitely double-check on that and get, relay the information with James. Off the top of my head, I'm not 100% sure Flow requires you to have an active account, but I do know through the account, you're able to scan the QR code, so I believe you do, but I will double-check on that to make 100% sure.
Okay. I don't, I'm just, I'm going to use a term that Councilwoman, Mayor Proton James has said. I don't love it. I'm sorry, it works. But I also am supportive of our climate action planning goals. I think the subsidy of 245 and the city paying 83, and we, are, and how are we paying for the 83? What funds is that coming out of again?
Through the chair, we'll be front-loading with ARPA, and then those rebates will be reapplied back to our ARPA balance.
be reapplied back to our ARPA balance.
Okay. So Based off of that, it's not coming out of our general fund, it's not coming out of parking fund. It's a one-time use. I can live with the app, and it's not our problem that we didn't create that problem. Industry problem. I'm talking through my stickiness, uncomfortableness. So with that, if there's no more questions, we do need to make a motion or do we have enough information in order to make a decision? Or we could table it to bring back some more maintenance cost items for council.
Through the chair, to that end, do we have certain time constraints, a deadline by which something needs to be accepted or rejected or lost or?
I mean, it's hard to say. I don't know that GM would have an answer for that. I'm sure that we know it's available now. Maybe it'll be available in the future. That would, I guess, be a question I could shoot to GM. I know that the longer we delay, the longer it takes to order the equipment, the longer the timeline's extended, et cetera, but I could reach out to GM if that would be helpful.
Through the chair. I'm not opposed to the project. I just, my concerns are, are we, are we too ahead of this, this plan or this goal? I just, my concern is investing in something that isn't, it may be a priority, but it's not something that is overutilized by the community right now. I feel like, you know, we'd be putting in more units that, yes, people will use, but it's not like people are driving around our parking lots looking for, you know, charging units. And 83,000 is a lot of money. And I know that we're looking at some recouping of that cost. This is also an investment into our infrastructure. I get that. I just, with, you know, are there other projects that we could put 83,000 to that we could utilize ARPA funds? You know, yes, this isn't the general fund, but, you know, there's, you know, we've used ARPA funds for, you know, fire department equipment. I don't want to come back in, you know, six months and not have enough money that we could utilize that for something that's a little bit more urgent. I'm not opposed to this project, but I just don't know if this is, for me, if this is the right time for it. Again, I was originally under the impression that this was going to be fully funded, and maybe I misunderstood the conversation when we've talked about that, you know, in the past.
I, I hear your perspective, and my perspective is being immersed in the EV world for over a year, my job at the Detroit Regional Partnership on the $52 million grant of the Build Back Better Regional Challenge Grant to shift our region from ICE, internal combustion engines, to EVs. And I was, I was sought after as an elected official who drove an EV, who was also having a city lead in climate neutrality. An EV is a key investment by our federal government right now to shift to support our industry, workforce, and jobs here. And so there, if you go to the State of Michigan Community EV Toolkit, there's a heat map there of EV chargers. The governor announced this back a few months ago, and you can see that there aren't many chargers, public level two chargers in southeast Michigan, but Ferndale is a little hotspot around Nine and Woodward. And then downtown Detroit. And the network is being built out. And if we don't put them in, then another city will just get it and put them in, and there will be another heat spot for that city and their location of where they are investing in that. So I'm supportive of this project because it's ARPA funds, and there's a rebate portion of this. Again, I don't love the multi-app problem, but that's not a problem that we've created. We lived with DTE for 10 years, and I saw people using that all the time. And I think the adoption of EV cars is going up. Ferndale has always been an early adopter with green vehicles. We were the first city to put in a green car, free parking pass if you drove a hybrid or something else, which we removed a few years, handful of years ago.
I may through the chair. I guess what I'm struggling with is, is that I've not seen, when we have issues or topics that we are spending money on, typically the community comes out, and I'm not seeing a whole lot of demand for this. And I get Ferndale, we tend to be the starting point of some of these projects, and then other communities follow. But I guess I'm just not, I don't know what the demand is for this at this time. Based on the 83,000, I'm seeing here that it's 83,000 net after credits are reimbursed, but what's the total of the, if we're 83,000 in net that we're coming out of, what's the reimbursement? I guess I don't know what we're getting.
Through the chair, it's about, it will cost the city upfront about $240,000. That's the cost of the project. And then we receive back 160,000. So the net, the net cost will be $80,000 in ARPA funding.
So when we get that, so that's what we're saying, that those are the reimbursements, they're already incorporated. It's not something we're getting later. They're already incorporated in this project. Is that what I'm hearing?
Rebates come at the conclusion of the project. Yeah, that's DTE's commitment.
Yeah. Okay.
We're putting all the money up front and then getting the reimbursement. And those are guaranteed reimbursements.
Most of our parks grants are reimbursement, reimbursable grants.
Yeah.
It's a typical model with federal funding.
Yep.
Through the chair, I have no, I have no issue with that. And I did, I did redo the calculation because the 83,000, is that right? 83, yeah, includes a 15%, contingency. So really, the bottom line is 71,000 is what we absolutely would end up being charged if there was no overrun costs. Of course, we always know there are overrun costs. So our next council meeting, I'm sorry, through the chair, our next council meeting is August, yeah, August 14th. Is there, I mean, are we risking this project if we waited till then and we had more financial figures, more solid information? Because I really would like to know what, you know, out of this 71,000, how will we be able to recoup that over the next five years? And I'd like it in a little, I know that you've included a lot of numbers in here and figures, but I'd like it laid out a little more simpler for me.
Yep, I could easily prepare a presentation that looks at the data that we have been collecting from the DOT for the last couple of years on the ZFNet platform, and then I can kind of walk through how we've extrapolated that to these proposed chargers, and we can kind of look at the, all the costs that'll be associated in year six, what we expect to bring in years one through five, not looking at those costs. But yes, basically, I could come up with a detailed cost benefit analysis roughly.
Thank you.
May I offer a tabling of this?
Please do.
There's affirmative noddy to table this until it's ready to come back to council.
And through the chair, if I might add a request, I'm having a hard time finding the meeting of the original presentation. It was quite some time ago, so my memory on it is poor. If someone in the clerk's office might be able to help provide the link to that meeting so that we can refresh our memories about what our understandings were. The original presentation of this program
This is our first, this is our first presentation this program, but there was a separate, parallel EV discussion from our third-party partner who is seeking to raise funds to support city fleet
Yes.
investments, which is a separate project, but I can't, I can't provide that reference for you.
Okay, maybe that's why my memory is so rusty because it might be apples and oranges.
And if I may
Who's the coupon guy?
Here you go.
And if I may through the chair, is there some documentation or statistics to show the need for this in our community right now? Did we do something to show that, had a study of some sort? Because I'm not, I'm not
It's a regional study? It's a regional study, statewide study, a workforce study of retaining jobs and supporting an industry that is in transition, which all of the automotive OEMs have said that they're transitioning out of ICE vehicles by 2030 or 2035. So in the next 10 years, so you're going to have an increase every year of more people switching to EV. So it's not a, we have a ton of EV engineers in Ferndale who live here, who work for the automotive companies. One of them is on our inclusive accessibility. He's the chair of our
Alan.
Alan is a, is a GM EV engineer, and so, who's been advising a lot on the transition. So let's table this. Do we need a motion to table?
Mayor, I move to table this item to a future meeting.
Moved by Mayor Potem James and supported by McCulkey.
James?
Yes.
McCulkey. Leaks May?
Yes.
Polka?
Yes.
Kiana?
Yes. All right, we're moving on to 8B, which was pulled from the consent agenda, and that item was
Through the chair, approval.
7C, approval of the special event permit for the 2023 DIY Street Fair to be held September 22nd through 24th, 2023. Michael, come on up. Can you summarize the issue again, and have you figured out a solution while you were sitting back there?
Yeah, actually, Janice and I spoke a little bit in the hallway, and first of all, the north end of the pedestrian alleyway does remain open at all times. It's just not really clear on the aerial map, but that has always been available as an access point for in and out of the alley. The southern end is where the major concern is, and during the special events committee meeting, the concern for the producer of DIY is that he has the other access points for entrance and exit and that he feels is the least utilized, but it also requires a security or personnel to be there to monitor, to prevent people from going, taking liquor, alcohol beverages out of the event or bringing beverages in the event because the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, MLCC, requires fencing for any special event with alcohol sales. So that's mandatory. We have no control over that other than to follow the law. So really, the concern here is whether or not we require that to be an entrance and exit point with someone stationed there to monitor, to prevent that alcohol beverage to come in or go out.
Are there any follow-up questions? You're right, the map does not do justice on what really is there or how it will work.
In previous years, it's always been managed with either a staff member or security guard. And the event producer, his concern is that it's a cost issue for him because to have a security guard there, it's a cost issue. So he's trying to cut costs where he can. And the majority of the special events committee agreed, supported him and his desire to do that. However, after speaking to Janice and her concern with that access point being available so that people have access to the back, to get to their back door as well as barrel house. So really, the point here is, you know, asking for your decision on how you feel about this so that we can move on and feel that this, as we did also, for example, for the Sunday evenings about sound and music, where we made a, you guys, council, made a decision to shut down music at nine o'clock on Sundays. This could be a perfect way of, in the future, we can just say this is the wishes of the council.
Through the chair, I just want to make sure I understand clearly. In years past, the southern entry point to the alley has been staffed so that patrons of the businesses that utilize that alley could come and go
Correct.
They just would have to, if they bought something at DIY to drink, they'd have to ditch it before
Yes.
passing through.
It was done for Pig and Whiskey and for the DIY in the past.
Was it done for Pig and Whiskey this year?
No, actually, the rationale there was the, Jade's penalty box was on, they closed for that weekend, and they went on vacation, which they well deserved because they work so hard all the time as it is. So, isn't that right, Janice? And so obviously, then there was no reason for them to need that area opened for that weekend.
Do we, based off of your direction, do we, what do we need to amend, if anything?
I would recommend, at your pleasure, of course, as to whether or not to decide to add to the recommendation that the south end of the pedestrian alleyway remain an entrance exit point to the event.
Does that add a cost to the event?
It would be a cost to the event, not to the city.
How much would that increase the event?
I don't, I don't know. He does have security guards that are at all the other entrance and exit points, which is required, that they have to be staffed to prevent people from, as I said, taking in or out alcohol beverages.
Great. Thoughts, comments, motion?
Through the chair, I feel like I would be generally supportive of keeping both of those open, so keeping the north end open and then having a guard at the south end. But I have no idea how to craft that motion.
Through the chair, it could be just to approve the request with the modification to the attached exhibit to allow for access through the, through the Nine Mile alley location as well as maintaining access, public access, with staffing if necessary on the southern part. The actual request for council is the same, it's just modifying the exhibit.
All right, I'm going to take a crack at that. I move to approve the special event permit for the 2023 DIY Street Fair to be held September 22nd through 24th, 2023, and authorize the mayor to sign the license agreement as submitted by the special event director and as amended to allow for entry at both the north and south end of the pedestrian alley, parallel to Woodward, south of Nine Mile, with security if necessary.
Support with questions. Um. to enter the event and be ID'd, go through the event, and then exit into the alley in order to reach the back door?
Now, only on the south end. On the north end, it's always, the way the fencing is set up, it goes along the curb of the sidewalk, so the sidewalk is accessible at all times. So you don't have to even go through the event to get to the alleyway from the north end. The south end is the only concern here.
Through the chair, much like the Cinco de Mayo event that we had earlier, where the fencing is in like the gutter, along Nine Mile. So there's a pathway along the sidewalk.
You've already supported. There's a motion on the floor. It's moved and supported.
Yeah.
Let it roll.
I have to see it.
Ames.
You can vote no on your own support.
Polika.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
McCulkey. Piana.
Yes.
Okay, we'll make it happen.
Thank you, Michael. All right, that concludes our regular agenda, and we're moving on to call the council, and we start with council updates. Handing the baton over to the city manager. Take it off.
Thank you. Mayor?
Since I'm already up here, can I go ahead?
Please.
Well, just want to remind everybody that 2023 Woodward Dream Cruise is coming up in August here in Ferndale. It's August 18th and 19th. So just to make this a short announcement, please go on our website at FerndaleDreamCruise.com for all the information on all the exciting events that are going to be taking place. FerndaleDreamCruise.com. Thanks.
Thank you, Dream Cruise Director. Assistant City Manager Denise Woods-McWayne.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to let you guys know that our CPARB will be having their first orientation meeting this Wednesday at 5:00 PM right here in council chambers, and this will just be an intro into the boards and commissions, and they'll learn a little bit about the citizen complaint process and things of that sort. And then I also wanted to send out a special thank you to our Mayor Pro Tem Kat Berner-James and Councilwoman Leaks May for attending what I've been calling our Mini Ferndale, which is just the Southeast Oakland Coalition Youth Leaders of Tomorrow Summer Camp. So this summer camp is geared towards introducing seventh and eighth grade students to different types of career avenues that they could take, as well as financial literacy. And so this week is Government Week, and myself, along with some staff, have agreed to take the students through a little bit about what government, local government is. And so they both showed up and talked to the students a little bit about what they do and what they love about their job, so I just wanted to say thank you, and yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Jim, want to come back up for one more comprehensive update on behalf of the DPW?
So DPW has a few projects going on. You'll notice the Vester Water Meme Project has been completed, the Sylvan Water Meme Project has begun, Bermuda Pavement is wrapping up. The pavement is beginning at Fielding, Paxton, Northway, West Saratoga, Sonoma, and Chestnut. We have joint repairs on West Nine Mile between Livernoy and Plantinavon beginning soon. And the last thing I'd like to mention is that the Dream Cruise is coming soon. We'll have more updates on that and the Woodward paving at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Emmanuel lining up like he's about to be announced, starting power forward for the Ferndale.
I knew I was on deck. Good evening, council. Just a few updates from Parks and Recreation. Last Thursday, we were scheduled to have our park at night, which will be an event where we see activities, games, food trucks, and a showing of Super Mario Bros. But the sky opened up on us, so we ended up having to cancel the event. So it has been rescheduled to take place on Thursday, August 3rd, at 6:00 PM at Harding Park. Like I said, it'll be food trucks, games, activities, different vendors that'll be out there. The movie should be starting at about 8:15 on that day. It's a completely free event to the public. Feel free to bring your chairs and your blankets and everything, and have a great time. We'll also have a movie on the hill showing. That movie is going to be, to be determined, but it will take place on Thursday, August 17th, at 8:00 PM at Martin Road Park. We'll have concessions, and we'll have a viewing of the movie that will probably start around nine o'clock-ish, because we've got to wait for the sun to go down for that one. I'd also want to announce that we are seeking volunteers for our upcoming Fall Festival, which will be taking place on October 7th this year. Volunteers will be responsible for various games, activities, setup, cleanup, wristbands, et cetera. We rely on volunteers for this event. It's our biggest event that we put on every single year, and the volunteers play a huge pivotal role in making sure that it goes off without a hitch. So if you're interested in volunteering, or you know somebody that's interested in volunteering, please have them contact us at recreation@ferndalemi.gov. I also want to announce that we will be holding our America in Bloom Media Event, which will celebrate America in Bloom's contribution to our upcoming Wilson Park Improvement Project, in which they are granting us $25,000 to improve the landscape and beautification of the area. That event will take place on Monday, August 7th, at 12:30 at Wilson Park, and we'll have some speeches from some various officials and some, like, concessions that'll be served there. And last but not least, I want to announce that we have welcomed in a new recreation aide named Alicia Pardo. She will be helping us out with our Smart Dispatch and our seniors, and she comes to us with a variety of different experiences from different, different employment opportunities that she's had. So we want to welcome any seniors that want to come up and meet her, come up to see her in the Kibizo and get to know her, because she'll be handling a lot of the stuff going forward. That'll be it.
Thank you. Next, Kyle Bryce with an update from CED, I think.
Oh.
His business has been handled. Through the chair. City Clerk.
This is the final reminder that nominating petitions and signatures for city council and mayor are due tomorrow, July 25th, at 4:00 PM. That is a state deadline. We will also be kind of transitioning into election mode, and we'll be starting to hire election inspectors probably at the beginning to the middle of September this year. And then we'll be sending out applications for absentee ballot applications in about a month, which is about the 75-day deadline prior to the November election, which the state sets for us. So that will be coming here in about a month.
And Mayor, it's tabled, cheers.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Councilwoman Polka tonight.
Okay. The only thing I have is, I want to let everybody know that the Ferndale seniors will be hosting a Ferndale City Council Candidate Forum on August 9th at 11:00 AM right here in city council chambers. For those of you who have the ability to make it during the day, I encourage you to come, meet the candidates, and learn more about them, where they stand on the issues facing the city. And I have requested of the city manager, but I haven't gotten a response yet, whether or not it's going to be videotaped, or broadcasted, or both.
Through the chair, I submitted a request for a contractor.
Excellent, excellent. Hopefully that gets through. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Will parking be free that day?
Oh, thank you, adding that. Yes, parking will be free that day in the city hall lot.
All right, Councilwoman Leaks May.
So, a few weeks ago, we had a, a long-time resident of Ferndale pass away, Frank Flores, and I just would really like to, yes, I would really like to work with the city clerk to get a proclamation in honor of his service and commitment to the city. But yes, it was a few weeks ago, and I did manage to reach one of his daughters and suggested that maybe they wanted some information, wanted to personalize it a little bit, and I plan to give information to reach out to you, Dean, so that maybe we can have this at the next council meeting. That is all I have for tonight.
Mayor Potem James.
Nothing for me. I will not be here for the first of August. I will be out of town for a family event, which means someone on council, I don't know who's figured out with Michael, that is doing some Woodward Dream Cruise event, supporting that. So I hope you have reached out to Joe about who will be attending on behalf of the Woodward Dream Cruise ribbon cutting. And I'm going to just conclude with sharing something personal, but please encourage your family members to get their hearts checked out. I had a very close family member have a heart attack this past week. It was very scary for me and my family, and when I see people post on social media about their loved ones having deep health scares, I know how anxious and stressful that can be. So I just wanted to say, you know, encourage people to go get their hearts checked out, and thankfully, my dad will be okay, as part of the recovery process. I just wanted to express support for staff and council who've supported me over the last few days, so hold on to your people tight, that's what I said. Love them, you love them, if you don't say it every day. With that, it is 9:52, I'm calling it. Thanks, everybody. See you in August.
Thank you.